Like to call a regular meeting of the planning commission to order, please.
I want an introduction of our planning commissions. Starting from my left to right, Scott. Sutherland from Western Carolina. From Paul Roy, I got Dr. Carol Horton. I'm Percy Almiron from Madupena. Bob Schultz from Bowling Green. And George Weber from Madison. County Attorney, Chris McKenzie. Land and I got Craig Pennington. And Lisa. Zach. Administration. Can we all stand for the President Lisa Black? Can I get approval of the minutes from January or February, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes as submitted.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
First thing on agenda is unfinished business with RZ dash oh one, two thousand twenty-two. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As I said previously, the staff report for this case has remained the same for us to work at the work session on the details and figure out where this case stands. At this time, staff would suggest that the request for extension of water and sewer and the twenty-two thirty-two comprehensive plan review be taken, be applied for and taken to the board supervisors for approval or denial to determine where this rezoning stands with by right lots.
Question for staff? Question for the county attorney?
Well, it has
Question for the applicant?
It has, it has to go to the board supervisors to, to review all that, whether we approve or deny it anyway, right?
It, it does not have to. Um, but we went through the, the legal analysis that we just went through in the work session. I think says if, if, if in order to have public water and sewer service this, you need board approval. And so the rezoning application that's before you does not comply with the zoning ordinance because it's requesting a higher density than it, than it has under the zoning ordinance because it doesn't have public water and sewer. Um, so, you know, procedurally, it's, it's, it's up to the applicant, it's up to you. Um, you still have time to defer on your own accord and take time to let staff try to, you know, work with the applicant on this. Um, it is, you cannot mandate that staff submit an application, you know, submit a request for board approval of public water, uh, and sewer. Um, but that's gonna be, you know, that's, I think it would be very legally challenging for you to approve this rezoning without that because the zoning ordinance doesn't allow for this density without public water and sewer. Um, and so you don't have to make a decision tonight, you can, you can move to defer to the next meeting, see where things are in a month. Um, but you also have the ability to vote on it tonight if you so chose. Um, and if you did that, you would need to vote on the application that's before you.
Chris, if, if I've got to follow if, if it's okay, if you're finished.
Well, I, I was just saying, I, I mean, if, if something happens, it's denied, it's still going through the same process though with the board supervisors. They've got to go through the zoning approval and then after that, they've got to decide, do they want to approve the subdivision or not?
Well, actually, if you were to act on it tonight and it were to go to the board of supervisors and the request be made for the water and sewer extension, then it would actually have to get held up at the board of supervisors for the water sewer extension and twenty-two, twenty-two thirty-two comprehensive plan review to you guys and then get or do anything. The, the water sewer extension and the twenty-two thirty-two comprehensive plan review has to be done before the board. Well, it doesn't have to be done before the board can act on it, but if you guys
Oh, so we have to do that part?
Yes, the water and sewer extension and twenty-two thirty-two comprehensive plan review has to come through you guys before it goes to the board. So if you act on it tonight, then you're gonna have to act on the water sewer extension comprehensive plan review at the time of that application.
Well, in that case, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and, uh, I believe at this particular time, I would make a motion to defer this application because there's too much vagueness here and we don't know whether or not the board of supervisors even considering allowing water and sewer to be there. So I think at this particular stage, before we get into, I'm looking at rezoning something.
George, if we could, I'd really like to hear what the applicant had to say.
Oh, of course.
You know, what we've received, I think, is, you know, uh, an interpretation from our general counsel. I'm just interested if he's got a different interpretation and I'd be interested to hear that before we move.
Okay, fine. By all means, sorry.
Good evening. So you want me just to go through what my understanding of the, the water and sewer?
Well, you know, obviously we've, you know, heard from our general counsel, if you have differing views or interpretations, I'd be interested in hearing those.
Well, I, I would just say as a county resident, I'm a little frustrated. Um, we started, um, you know, the, the owners of the property, the Raglins, which are right here, started, you know, months and months ago, um, uh, meeting with the county or at least the representative, um, just to determine what they, you know, they wanted to market the property and wanted to understand what they could do and the water and sewer issue was never brought up. Once I got involved and we put the property under contract, I met with Joey Shebel, the director of utilities. He saw absolutely no reason, he thought it was a good positive addition to their water and sewer utility system because the more customers that you have on there, the, the better that they are. And we were willing to put a well in to, um, to make up the difference in our, um, usage. And, uh, you know, as we went through the planning process with the planning staff, um, you know, I provided the GDP that showed the by right number of units. We never received a, a comment letter from the county saying that we couldn't do that by right. I mean, nor did I ever have any correspondence. The first really that I, we went through that was when I got a copy of the staff report, which was on the Friday before the meeting that we had before you last time. You know, and so we subsequently have had a meeting with planning staff and, you know, uh, planning staff has, uh, you know, voiced their, um, their concerns and their position. You know, the only thing that I would say, when I read the comprehensive plan, it, it has one line that says that, uh, you know, water and, uh, public extensions are not permitted in rural areas. Well, I mean, I have a residentially zoned piece of property I'm trying to extend to. Water is right on the same side of the road, just down the street. And why in the world the county would ever want us to put in well and septic systems when you have a viable public utility system right there, regardless of how many units I have? Plus, you know, we're providing availability fees that Mr. Shebel said would go to debt service. I mean, we're talking almost one point four, maybe more than one point four million dollars in availability fees that go to debt service. Why would the county not want us to do that? So I have some frustration there. And then when it goes to the, the water regulation, you know, section one twelve thirty-six, uh, B, you know, well, A first talks about any subdivision that's located within a primary growth area designated by the comprehensive plan. Well, that's not us because we're not in the growth area. But B very specifically says that any subdivision located outside of a primary growth area designated by the comprehensive plan and, and located in any R-one or greater zoning district, district shall provide a central water system which conforms with applicable requirements of the county and federal governments. Well, to me, it's very clear in the ordinance that I have to connect. And so, I mean, I, I hear all the lea-, you know, I hear the legal argument being made to support a position that planning staff has now taken. But it's a little frustrating, you know, as, uh, as a resident in Caroline and as a representative of the Raglin family who felt as though they had certain rights that, um, you, you know, to develop property and it almost, you, you get the feeling that those rights are being taken away. And so when we provided the GDP, my, my initial layout, I had over two hundred lots. And we made the decision that we felt it was best that to make the, um, just to say, hey, we don't want to do any more lots than we can by right because we thought we could extend water and sewer based on every meeting we ever had. And the only thing we want to do is do the number of units. Not that we could do by paper, but I actually did a layout to show you, I can only do this number of lots based on the configuration of the actual property. If you look at actual density numbers and I did some calculation, I could probably get closer to two hundred. But, you know, I went through the exercise of physically doing a, a layout to show you what I could physically do on that property. And all we wanted to do was to reconfigure that over the, the three, uh, parcels because we felt as though it provided a much better, um, you know, design development. And, um, and so I, I mean, just a little frustrated, but, uh, you know, I understand that's how government works and, you know, if the process means we have to go through a comprehensive plan review. I mean, I'm certainly willing to go through that to see where that, that provides, but, uh, you know, I will just express my frustration with, um, why we weren't, you know, why didn't we start with that? If that were the case and we always knew that, why didn't, why weren't we told that, that's step one? If that's what you want to do, go through that first step and we would have done that. So I don't know if that answers your question, there's more information than you needed.
No, I, I, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, you know, uh, lay out, you know, what your line of thinking was. You know, we have one interpretation, you, you may have had another. I'm sensitive to, you know, your thoughts and just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to, you know, talk on it.
Right, I, I appreciate that, thank you. Anything else for me before I sit down?
Any more questions? No.
I, I think I, I might add just to, to help explain a bit that, you know, this is, um, the planning commission is the advisory body to the board of supervisors. And part of your role as the planning commission is to scrutinize and develop these applications and, and help crystallize them by the time they get to the board and, and suss through some of this. And, um, so this is part of the process where in analysis of an application, you identify issues that require resolution or clarification. Uh, that is your role as the planning commission, uh, the planning commission. That is your advisory role to the board, not just to make a recommendation, um, one way or the other, but also to hopefully develop the application so that it's refined by the time that it reaches the board. And so I do see what, I think what staff's doing and what you're doing with these work sessions, uh, as, you know, directly in line with that role.
Thank you. So George, I think you were getting ready to lead in, I, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we defer. So whereas the general welfare and good zoning practice warrants, I move to defer RZ zero one dash two zero two two, uh, Raglin subdivision and, and until we can do that comprehensive plan review, uh, to the next regular meeting for further discussion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Um, I have a question though, Chris. Um, should it go to the next meeting automatically or is there something that should happen in between before it comes back?
Well, the staff could have the opportunity to
I thi-, I think it, I mean, you, you've made the motion. And, um, I mean, I think you can pick it up at the next meeting and
At this time, uh, we, we request that you defer to the next meeting to allow the applicant time to request deferral, um,
If they want.
If they want to go through the next application.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that would be, I, I think you've got your motion, I think it's, uh, you, this will place it on the agenda as unfinished business at the next meeting, you can get a status report from staff. You can, and that will help inform whether you want to defer again if you have time, the applicant wishes to defer, uh, or if you want to vote on it at that meeting and the next meeting, I think that's procedurally just fine.
And, and we will receive a, um, a packet from, well, we always receive a packet before the meeting, but we'll, we'll receive some information how this is found in the comprehensive plan so we can start to review it and study it and make the determination.
It's not something that's currently in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan review that we're speaking of be a new document that would be added to the comprehensive plan that you would, it would come in front of you document and decide to either approve it and add it to the comprehensive plan or deny it and keep it out of the comprehensive plan. It's not a review of the current comprehensive.
So there's nothing in the current comprehensive plan? Cause Mr. McKenzie was reading something from the current comprehensive plan that I thought applied to this application.
Yeah, it, and that's, that was from the statute about comprehensive plan reviews when they're necessary.
Okay.
I think, you know, I, I do think it's kind of hard to, to, to review in the abstract. Um, but if, if that's where this goes and, you know, again, I think we, it depends, we need, the applicant is in charge of their application. Um, but you will get a separate staff report explaining, here's what the comprehensive plan says now, here's what our master plan shows for existing public utilities, here's what the proposal is and here's what your job is, you know, what you're being asked to analyze whether that's in line for the proposed public utility, expansion of public utilities, is it in line with what, uh, if it's not shown on the existing master plan, if adding it to that is in line with the overall, uh, um, guidance of the comp plan for where Caroline County wants to install these facilities. And, and, you know, I think that's when you have some of that, um, analysis of Caroline High is right there. The, Mr. Shebel said that there's sewer mains with sufficient diameter to take the flow. Um, you know, the alternative would be sixty-three by right with their own wells. You can have that analysis as part of that process for the twenty-two thirty-two review. And again, I think it's important to remember that there's two layers to that. There's the technical, mechanical, is this, is it, is it physically possible to install this? And then the legal layers, which we went through on the work session, which is how would this get approved from a legal perspective? And it's a complicated issue and I think, you know, staff's done a great job trying to work through it all and get it teed up for you so it's procedurally appropriate.
Question? Okay.
You ready to begin your next case?
Yes, public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Public hearing is now open.
On water, did we, did we vote on the deferral? I know we have.
Yes, you, yes, you did, you voted to defer to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll turn it over to Ms. Zach for the public hearing protocols.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments free, not to exceed three minutes and address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Now we open up to RZ dash oh two, twenty twenty-two, Double Down Outdoors, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant's requesting approval of a rezoning from M-one industrial to B-one commercial on tax map parcel eighty-five dash A dash thirty-eight. There were no agency comments other than the Virginia Health Department. They've stated that should this permit be approved, the applicant will need to have a drain field evaluation performed in order to locate the septic field as they have no record of where the septic field is located and provide the results to ensure that the drain field can handle the use of the building. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as agricultural preservation. The plan further states that this area shall be utilized for agricultural production and agricultural residential uses. This use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, however, this property is already an M-one industrial zone property and a B-one commercial use would be more consistent with the character of the area. The applicant's requesting approving this, the applicant's requesting approval of this rezoning. The co-, parcel was previously rezoned in two thousand eleven to M-one industrial. That rezoning provided for the design of the site where Rousey Boulevard was relocated to the current location along the western property line. This rezoning was approved and an old store was rehabbed into a plumbing HVAC contractor's office. The applicant currently has a home occupation permit to operate Double Down Outdoors. Currently, the owner must conduct all business via internet sales and email. Customers may schedule an appointment to pick up their items. The applicant would like to move his business to a viable location for retail of outdoors equipment. Plan sales would include camping equipment, animal feed and firearms. Provided with a map that shows you the general location of the parcel.
Is the applicant present?
How's everybody doing tonight? Just want to say thank you for letting me come here and do this.
Put your name, give your name, please.
My name is Sean Bernard, I am the owner of Double Down Outdoors. Um, just, this is just a, an additional opportunity for us to continue growing and providing services to the community. Uh, we get a lot of folks that contact me looking for stuff and they're grateful that they can get stuff in Caroline without having to exit the county to get product from, from other sources outside of the county. So we feel like we provide a pretty good service to the folks around here. And for once in my life, I'll be happy to provide some tax revenue back to the government as well. So we're looking forward to doing that as part of, you know, business here. Uh, we also provide a good service, I believe, to, uh, conservation groups such as the NWTF as well as, uh, veteran and current, uh, military folks, uh, through the Fallen Outdoors. So we do a lot for those folks as well. Um, hopefully y'all's consideration will be greatly appreciated. Uh, we look forward to serving the community even better than what we are now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll open up the public hearing. For, uh, or against this application? Anybody want to speak for or against?
Good evening, county members, my name is Edward Williams, I am, uh, in the zone for Milford voting district. Uh, my role is the team lead for a veteran nonprofit organization. I lead the entire state of Virginia. And, um, one of the things that I've had the opportunity to do was meet and, uh, get to know the Bernards over the past two, two and a half years. Myself personally, I grew up in King George, my wife and I moved to Caroline County. I know several business owners in the town of Bowling Green. And I can put Sean and his wife on the same level as those business owners. Fantastic, uh, business owners, they're gonna, they're gonna operate a, a great business, bring a lot of, uh, support to our community. And so I am for, uh, the rezoning to Double Down Outdoors, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, how you doing? Uh, my name is David Harper, Jr. I've, uh, been a resident out of Milford, Virginia, or Sparta area, as I tell everybody. Uh, I've been a resident of this county since I was born, twenty-seven years. And it's been great to see how the county and including the town of Bowling Green has expanded and grown over the years. All these new local businesses, small businesses, mom and pop shops. And I think that Double Down Door is a big addition to the county, not only for the tax revenue, but the people who run and operate are good people. And I just think that it'd be a positive for the county and also for the sporting community, for all the hunters and all the shooting sports people in the county. And I believe that, uh, more businesses for the county, the better. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. No other questions?
So I've got a question for the applicant. How long have you been in business to date?
Currently, we are closing in on three years.
Okay. That was it?
Oh, thank you.
If you, yeah, I have some for you too. Um, so you're operating out of your home now because it's internet?
Correct.
Okay, and you're living in which county now?
We are in Caroline, we are on Doggett Fork, so believe, we are still under Madupena.
Okay, and how, how far south of Bowling Green is the new location? Trying to picture it in my mind.
We are, if you're familiar with, you know where the Panola Mart is?
Yes.
Right across the street.
Okay.
So the old Panola Mart is right across the street from where we will be now.
Okay, and how many employees do you have just yourself or?
Currently, myself and my wife, of course, with the expansion, we would be looking to increase employment.
Okay.
To support the business. I believe, once we move into that position, we, we will increase, uh, business, you know, movement. So we'll, we'll have an increase in sales, so we will have to add some staffing, so that will be a plus.
And you are, I may have missed it in this report, you're looking to, you already own this property, you're looking to rent it or?
So we are currently on a contract with the, uh, Corey Parker of Quality Land Group. So we are purchasing the property from him.
Okay, and, um, this may be more of a question of staff, the there didn't need, seem to be, need to be any type of turn lanes or any, I mean, it's a small business. VDOT didn't make any comments.
Correct, uh, in the rezoning in two thousand eleven, VDOT commented and at that time, Rousey Boulevard cut through middle of this lot. And so during that rezoning, VDOT had Rousey Boulevard relocated to its current location. You can see it's on the western portion of, of the triangle. And they also permitted the current entrance that's there in the two thousand eleven rezoning. So comments from VDOT were that the entrance, uh, still meets the same type of use and that, uh, they had no comments, uh, with no site improvements on the property.
Right. I think that's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
So you got two buildings on that property, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think it's a garage in the back, uh?
It is a ware-, yes, sir, warehouse space in the back.
You've been using that for storage?
Mostly storage, uh, we will also have an archery, you'd be able to shoot your bows in there so we can tune archery equipment for folks.
Craig, I was reading Greg, I was reading something that this could approve, they have to do something to the septic?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, the Health Department currently doesn't have a drain field septic tank location for this property. And also when, with the use change, uh, current, previously, it was a HVAC electrical contractor. Um, with minimal employees in there. And so with the change of use and the possi- customers having to use the restroom, then the drain field has to be evaluated to make sure that it meets this use. Previously, it was done under an industrial use, which usually has less use than a commercial use. And so they've asked that the drain field be evaluated by an A O S E to make sure that it can handle this use. And then to provide a location survey of the septic uh, field to the Health Department for uh, tracking.
Would that be in our motion, when we make, if, make a motion?
Uh, it doesn't need to be, it's required by the Health Department. And so um, before he could get his final C O and start operation in the building. The building official would hold him to that drain field evaluation.
Fire, firearms are mostly rifles?
Uh, rifles, shotguns, pistols as well.
Oh, okay.
Uh, everything, of course, will be under the federal firearms license regulations, uh, and we. We've done very well with our current local uh, A T F agent. Uh, she does very, very well with us with inspections and making sure that we're following all, all legal uh, processes with that.
And this is licensed for sales, correct?
Yes, this would be licensed for sales, um, however, like Mr. Bernard stated, um, firearm sales regulated by A T F. And he has to have inspections and, and their permits, um, so we would permit the retail use of this building. And then it'd be up to A T F to uh, keep an eye on the firearm sales.
More questions? Ready for a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to say, I, I stopped yesterday and spoke with Mr. Bernard. He has a, a pretty sound business plan. He's already making improvements to the interior of the property, the exterior has, has been dressed up a bit. I think his business could probably be described, and he, I don't think he likes the description of a mini green top. So, inasmuch as we have two or three hunters in Caroline County. It, it's the type of business that we do need. We don't have anything at all in the county like, uh.
Green top.
I can say a mini green top. But uh, I, I think he's gonna be a, a welcome addition to the retail aspect in the county, and it's something that we do need. So uh.
There's a Gander Hill instead of a Gander Mountain.
Yeah, it's Gander this, or Gander that, whatever it is this day. But uh, with that being said. Whereas rezoning request, R Z zero two, two zero two two. For Double Down Outdoors appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request. I recommend that R Z zero two, two zero two two be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you all, greatly appreciate it. Thank you for the kind words, sir.
The next order of business is a text amendment, T X T dash O one dash twenty twenty-two, staff report.
Mission. Staff has provided a text amendment to the Caroline County zoning ordinance regarding the height of fences. Currently, the zoning ordinance allows for front yard fences of no more than three feet in height. Rear and side yard fences are allowed at a height of no more than seven feet. This amendment will allow for a front yard fence to be no more than four feet in height, with a six inch allowance for posts and caps. And must be an open face type of fence. A rear and side yard fence would be allowed to reach a height of eight feet. Once fences go over eight feet in height, they require a bo- building permit by the Virginia Building Code. The following is the text amendment as it reads. Fences and walls and hedges may be permitted in any required yard or along the edge of any yard. Provided that no fence, wall, or hedge along the sides or front edge of any front yard shall be greater than four feet in height. With six inches allowable for posts and caps. Provided that a fence or wall along the rear lot line or alongside lot line to the rear of the setback line shall not exceed eight feet in height. Front yard fences shall be open face and not solid. A minimum of ten foot site triangle shall be provided at all intersections and driveways as shown in figure forty-five. Of Article two of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. Or such greater width as determined necessary to meet Virginia Department of Transportation's site district.
Public hearing is open. Anybody for this, come up and speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. I'm actually glad to hear this um, come up before the board. I'm Rita Belmonte, AKA Rita Belmont. Um, I would really like to have um, a, a better understanding of. Of um, the fencing, because I, I at some point would like to fence my property. And uh, just to make sure that my grandchildren, you know, are safe when they're running across those four acres of land and. You know, in the event that I um, decide to get uh, produce uh, or livestock. Uh, for, you know, farming purposes. But um, um, when you say an open fence, are we talking about a fence that um. Has the, the, the wiring?
Uh, I'm not allowed to answer questions from the crowd.
I'm sorry, how do, you know, can, can that be, who, who brought this up? I mean, what, who's the person?
I think it can be explained after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
But it's a good question.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Anybody else, for or against this? Public hearing is closed.
So, just as a kind of practice pointer. Um, when you have a, a question raised during public comment, public comment's not a Q and A, so certainly raise questions. Um, and then you as planning commissioners can ask staff or me, or, you know, if there's an applicant, you could say. You know, a question was raised during public comment about the, the size of the fence, staff, could you answer, you know, could you address that for us? That's how we do that as opposed to engaging in a Q and A during public comment, just as a practice pointer.
And so a question was raised, what is open fencing?
Once the public hearing's closed, I'll be happy to answer.
Didn't you close it?
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry. Okay, so an open face fence would be a split rail fence, or a picket fence, or a chain link fence with the slats in it. Slats that go.
You gotta talk louder, sorry.
In and out, in and out.
But it's, I think it basically, it's a fence you can see through, right?
Yes, that would be correct. So, say you had a chain link fence, you can buy the vinyl slats that slide into the chain link and make it more solid where you can't see through it. Such as you see at convenience sites. You would not be able to put those plastic slats into the fence. A front yard fence or side yard fence in front of the house would need to be an open face fence. Which would be split rail, picket, or chain link.
For clarification, I think uh, split, uh, open face means fifty percent of the space is open.
And, and the purpose for that would be if you're in a neighborhood and you had a solid fence in your front yard. And your child's ball rolled out into the street and they came out, a car, passing car might not be able to see them in the yard until it's too late and they get into the street. So that's the requirement for an open face fence in the front yard.
So it's a safety issue.
Greg. What are you doing with sloped sites? We have a lot of them on the lake. They've come up, they come up and down, and up and down, up and down. How do we address this four foot height? From what point?
So it would be at the median point of the yard, and so obviously yards are not flat all the way. And so from the median height of the yard, it would be four feet from that. And so if it held up, then it would get a little bit shorter, and if it held down, it would get a little bit larger. But we would look at the median height of the yard to determine four feet.
Okay, I, I, I think um. Somehow that should be. Provided to some of the communities around, because this is not as easy as it sounds. I mean, it sounds great, and I believe I'm glad, glad this being, being addressed. But when you're deal, dealing with slope sites, sometimes it's not as easy as it make it out to be, so I think I would like, even though I like this text. I think some kind of clarification, as you just described, could be added to it. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Is the only thing that this um. Text amendment do, doing is increasing from three feet to four and seven feet to eight? Is that all we're doing?
That, and the requirement for the open face front.
Oh, we didn't have that one before.
Cause most of your fence comes six, eight.
Most of the time, most of the time fence companies sell fences in four, six, and eight feet.
Mr. Penniken, I'm looking at Article fifteen. And it, the. Text amendment just begs the question for me, what precipitated this change?
Request of a four foot fence in a front yard and looking at standard fence heights um, that are sold to the general public.
Because I, I have, I don't have any difficulty with the four foot, eight foot, and the six inch cap. The open face is what I, I'm having some difficulty with, because I can just see. Someone in an H O A, and why in the world somebody would subject themselves to an H O A, I don't know. But, uh. One neighbor nut, does not like the other neighbor's fence. So they come to the planning commission and ultimately to the board to have regulations put in. Well, I might want, in my property that I own, I might want a solid fence. Or a three quarter facing fence. But just because my neighbor doesn't want it, I have to abide by my neighbor's wishes? Uh, what if my neighbor doesn't like the color of my fence? Are we now gonna start regulating the color of the fences? I have no difficulty with the height, but I do have difficulty with the uh, open face.
And, and where again did you say open face should be? Front and?
It, it would be, it says front and side, and that's because anything in front of the front corner of your house is considered your front yard. So anything in front of the front corner of the house would be a front yard fence, which would be required to be open, open face. Once you get past the front corner of the house, then you're inside and rear yards, and that's where you can go to an eight foot fence and also be solid.
So you can still have a privacy fence in the backyard?
Side and rear yards, yes.
And this would pertain to uh, rural areas as well?
That is the current county fence ordinance, and so currently the county fence ordinance says you're three feet in the front, seven feet in the back. This would be the county fence ordinance that says you can go to four feet, eight feet, and open face.
And Mr. Shorts, just to clarify one point, um, like any text amendment. You, you know, any existing fences, that we had an existing solid fence, that'd be nonconforming. You wouldn't have to tear that down.
Thank you.
Why if, uh, but I guess if you have a wooden privacy fence. And, I mean, and you have to replace it completely because it's rotted out. Then it has to conform to the new text amendment, correct?
If, if you had a.
You're replacing.
If you had a three foot solid front yard fence at this time, then you could keep it. And if it rotted and you had to replace it, you would have to replace it with an open face fence, but you could go up to four feet now instead of three feet. But if you were to replace it just to try and get another foot, you'd have to go to the open face.
And that's, I mean, you can repair it, but if you're completely replacing, it's different.
You could rep, yeah, you could repair a couple boards, but if it turns into a whole section replacement, then, yeah, we would, we would ask for you to meet the new ordinance.
And this overrides an H O A, correct?
No, uh, the H O A can be more strict than the county, and so.
But can they be less strict than the county is what I'm asking?
No, they can't let it go to five feet, but if a H O A wanted to say, no, you're at two and a half feet, you're at two and a half feet.
Is there a requirement for uh, building inspections for seven feet at this point?
No, no fence requires a building permit for inspections until you hit, oh, get over eight feet.
So once you, eight feet, one inch, you've gotta have an inspection?
Eight point oh one feet, you have to have a permit and inspection.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions for staff?
Well, it's just my opinion, but I like the open see-through fence area in the frontal area of the house, just for safety reasons. So vehicles, I mean, because of the increasing population and increasing traffic, I'd like for vehicles to be able to see. Uh, children and, and animals and adults, you know, coming toward the road.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if I may. Whereas public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of. T X T O one, twenty twenty-two. I recommend that we send this T X T O one, twenty twenty-two. Forward to the Board of Recommendations for Approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Any and all matters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have won any and all matters for tonight. Uh, the county staff is asking for authorization to, to craft. And have a public hearing at the next meeting and a text amendment regarding an ordinance for battery storage for electricity. From solar sites. You're going back to solar again? So we would, we would like to, you to authorize us to write this text amendment and bring it for public hearing at the next meeting.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
I'll make a motion, what he said.
I'll second that. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
We can motion adjourn, please. So be it.
Second, this will be it.